Want to welcome everyone to the meeting. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm just checking, I don't know that it matters in a budget workshop. If we don't have a quorum yet, we will. As soon as we do, we'll call the roll, I guess.
I can't hear anything.
Ms. Wanda, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Wanda's phone's muted, or her microphone's muted.
Her micro, she should be able to hear though. I would think. She needs to be able to hear.
I see what you mean.
I think every name, I saw every name, Ms. Ford, are you there?
I still can't hear y'all. I know my phone was muted at one time, but it's on now.
I'm here. I'm here.
Was that it, Ford?
Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Crockett is here, but she's having a hard time hearing. Anyway, we can, it's a budget workshop though, so we don't necessarily have to have a quorum. I don't believe so. I'm sorry, Mr. Etherly just showed up here, so. We do have a quorum, so Ms. Sandy, you might as well call the roll.
Davis. St. Columbia. Ms. Crockett, I know she's on. Franklin. Etherly.
Here.
Ford, here. That's three council people and the mayor makes four.
Hopefully, Ms. Crockett will figure it out here in a minute. And hopefully she'll let us know. So I apologize, I missed Tuesday's meeting. I was out of town at a law enforcement prevention class in Louisville, Kentucky, and I'll just report that. I learned a lot and we had three other law enforcement people there, very instructive course for me. I left early. I didn't need the certification for my profession, so I didn't need to stay for that anyway, and I had a lot to do back home, so. I'm back now and I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna open it up for discussion. I'm not really sure. Somebody correct me if we have an agenda tonight. I don't think we do. Or maybe if we do, correct me. Mr. Turner, do you want to start the? This guy, anybody want to start the discussion? Let me just put that, open it up to everybody. Let me say, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I sent the salary information a few days ago, and so I just wondered if there were, there were any questions regarding that, what, and one of the things I told him, there are two was that usually the problems that we have when it comes to passing the budget prior to or by December 31st is always, most of the time it's salary related. And so I gave him some information about that. And so I wanted to open up any questions, if they had any, if there were, if there were any questions about some of the salaries that were in the proposed budget. And another thing, yeah, and another thing I want to them to consider. While we contemplate the items or any changes that we need in your proposed budget, is a need for surplus, we need to start building some cushion for contingencies, you know, that is always, we've always had a problem when something comes up, a lawsuit, or some significant equipment repair. And those things, especially the equipment repair, something significant, really shouldn't bring your operations to a stall like they do ours sometimes. So I'd just like the council to also take that into consideration when we, when we're going through some of these budget workshops and discussing anything that they want to add or cut from the budget. A rule of thumb that I was getting from the Government Finance Officers Association, the rule of thumb is to have about two months of expenditures, at least two months of expenditures equivalent in your surplus or the fund balance. And the way we've been operating this year, that would be 1.285 million dollars in surplus. And so we're nowhere close to that right now, and it'll take a while to get, some time to get there. But those are some of the things to stabilize operations a little bit more to really try to shore up our surplus, where our fund balance is what it's called. And so I'll open it up for any discussions anyone may have.
I have a question, that those figures that you gave us, that includes the cost of living and there, there are some additional monies in there? In those salaries?
The ones that I sent you with the the different employees on it?
Yes.
Yeah, the, what the numbers that I sent you didn't include benefits, those, that was just the hourly rate and the annual rate. And whatever changes that they were in those, I didn't include any benefit, retirement or social security, Medicare, any of that stuff.
I guess my, to be clear, there was a 3% of cost of living increase, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That for, for some of the people.
Yes.
Well, some of them went from 10 to 11, and how that, I don't, I didn't think that that included their cost of living because they, the minimum wage is going to change.
Yes, ma'am. My rationale regarding the people that are moving, that are getting the minimum wage increase is that that is an increase in pay. It may be mandated, may the citizens may have voted on it, but that is a, a increase in pay for those people. And it, for the most part, it's a 10% raise. It averages for us, the city, the people that are minimum wage, you know, their minimum wage will move up to $11. It averages about 90 cent for them, because there are some people that make a little over $10 an hour right now. But the vast majority of them will be getting a dollar increase, so on average it comes out to be about 90 cent. For the 3%, 3% cost of living, that comes out to be, I think around 54 cent, if I'm not mistaken. And so the, the people that are receiving the cost of living increase, on average are receiving a, a bigger increase in pay than those that are receiving the cost of living increase only.
Okay, I did see some others that had a significant increase.
Yes, ma'am. Those were, those were the merit, some, some of the department heads and city officials suggested wanted to have merit increases for a handful of employees, so I highlighted those in yellow. And so those designate the ones that are not the, that are not minimum wage increases and are more than the 3% increase.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? Chris Franklin. I was looking at, at day, even what you, what you're saying makes sense, but how do you figure that? If you look in the water department, there are people who are been there longer and they only make $10, but now you got somebody finna come in, go make the same thing that they've been making, they've been there the longest. I, I think before, and I mean, I applaud you and the mayor for working on your budget. But we really need to look at, we really need to look at this seriously. A lot of our folks are being undercut. I, I see some people here who won't raise this, but I think you should, you should look at overall. I mean, have the department manager or the department head, have they evaluated this person? That's the thing I've been saying since I've been on the city council, what is the, with human resource, what is a human resource person to make sure that, that the department here evaluates a person, make sure it's in their file? So when a person comes up for a raise, they ain't getting no nickel and dime, because, you know, you, you, you look at this. I see a person on, on here who would make, who has been here for years, making $10, and a guy who just got here, he gonna make $11, the same exact thing? So I mean, we, we, we need to, I know everybody want to raise, but I think that we really, really need to look at the people who are here working. I don't, I think the budget in, in the, with the raise perspective, needs to be relooked at. We all need to take a look at it and digest it, because if you get, if you get people, again, some people this kind of money, and people who have been there working, doing the same job, or a little different, even with machine, machine meters, heavy equipment operators, all those things should be looked at, because we don't look at it. I mean, I, I looked in the water department, you had lab techs and meter readers, machine operators, all of, and some folks who have got license and had been compensated for that. It's a whole list of things. I know the coronavirus have us meeting by Zoom, and we can't be on it hands on like I would like to be, but it's some people who are really dedicated to doing their job, and they ain't bringing nothing home with somebody who comes in making more than they make, and they been here four and five years. So somebody dropped the ball along the way, or they didn't evaluate the person, didn't have something in their file to say, hey, this person, attendance is good, or they haven't been wrote up, they're lowered to the job, all those things should be looked at. And I know I'm jumping all around the subject, because I'm looking at these raises, and it's, it, it, it's, it's, it's mind blowing. You know, I want everybody to be treated fair. I mean, from, from, I know the police and fire are two different entities between the garbage truck and the garbage man, everybody is different, but I think you ought to show people a little more leniency or a look more that I appreciate, because you look at Ms. Mitty Sanders, I didn't mean to call it that, but you look at her, she does, she do some work, but you, you're just gonna bring her up to $11? But you, you, we got in the budget, we'll get somebody's eight down now? So I, I think, you know, we need to really evaluate this. I, like I said, I applaud you all for mayor, for getting your budget together, but something must change. I, I mean, you know, I, I just, I just don't think that those numbers are good.
Sorry about that, I thought I was on, anybody else?
I, I have a different, I have a question, but I don't want to deviate from the current topic of discussion very much, and we'll deviate, so. Just let me know when it might be more appropriate for me to jump in. I want to ask about a specific department.
But it's a budget workshop, Don, I think you're good, man. Just go ahead.
Okay, police department. And first let me apologize, because I've been swamped over the last two to three weeks, and I've, I've been treading water, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep up. And I haven't really had a chance to, to review these. I really haven't had a chance to review all of these, like perhaps I would like to. But as I look at the police department in the 2020 projected salaries, we show 32 personnel. As full-time uniform officers, and maybe I'm wrong about that, no, that's, that's uniformed officers, 32. 17 patrol officer entry for first class, named four corporals, three sergeants, three lieutenants, three captains, one assistant chief, one chief. How many of those positions did we, have we completed 2020 with those positions being on field?
Yeah, I got a good idea. I can't tell you exactly, I mean, if somebody, whatever, my last numbers. Let me look. I think there, hold on a second, I got a better place I can look. I think there were like 16 police officers. Do you need a second to pull up? I thought I had my spreadsheet up. Can you give me a second to pull it up?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. We have 19 police officers, including the chief and assistant chief.
Okay, so. Are you saying uniform and not uniform?
No, that's just uniformed officer.
Okay, so, and you said 19, right?
Yes.
Okay, write that down. So we had 32, 32 spots, and
Yeah.
we're on the field 19 of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of those 19 are just recent hires as well, so they haven't been on the force.
And let me, let me add to that. The, if you'll remember, the city council approved a promotion and raise schedule for the police department a few months ago. The idea, which has been expressed here many times correctly, I think, is that, you know, we want to promote from within, if possible, promotion. Some of these things cross over into the, into the area of personnel matters, which, you know, we can't discuss. But, well, let me just put it this way. What we hope is that we, what we want to see is our existing police officers to be promoted up into better positions, better pay, and the city council approved a plan to do that. And also at the same time, bring in at the, at the entry level, new policemen at a more competitive rate of pay. And the city council approved that, and the, and it, and it has worked to a certain degree where we, I would say hit a little bit of a hiccup would be the promotion process itself. So how do we promote people? We have a third party proctored by the Phillips County College testing process. So it removes Chief Smith, it removes me, I mean, well, it removes me to the, to the point where, you know, one would not say, oh, the mayor's pet, you know, got promoted over someone more deserving. So the idea was to create a promotion scheme that would reward merit and take out or remove the accusation or appearance even. I would hope I wouldn't do that, but but to remove appearance of any possible sort of favoritism internally when it came to promotions and raises. And that process hasn't, hasn't come through, like we, we, we purchased the test, we've gone through with it. It's not that we didn't do that. We did that very promptly, actually. We'll try to say this as tactfully as I know how. We're gonna have to do that again. And there's gonna have to be a new test, which I think, which is in the process of being drafted instead of a third party, you know, test from somewhere else that includes our policy manual, which, incidentally, I think we might have still one more shoe to drop on proving that before the beginning of the year. I'm glad. Actually, I need to write that down, so we can put it on the next agenda, but. But anyway, includes, I guess, more practical things. And also a verbal or oral phase of the process. And Chief Smith has been in contact with the college on designing that sort of new promotion scheme to make it possible for our employees to to be promoted and, or to at least have the aspiration and the goal. We can't, we can't do, take the test for them, we can't do any of that stuff. But it also removes the appearance of any kind of, like I said, favoritism, it's merit only. That process has slowed down, you know, like I said, it had a hiccup. The goal of the police department is to have at least 30 uniformed police by the end of 2021. I hope that helps, Don.
And I, I, I'd like to make a correction, it's, it's lower than that, it's actually 14, so I was looking at the wrong spreadsheet.
Okay, well, thank you. My, my question is not, wasn't necessarily geared towards the housing wise, but just the number. Because what that means is we didn't, we would have actually had a savings in that department. Although maybe perhaps unintentional, we would have had a savings in that department because all those positions on field. And I was, I was actually looking forward, trying to be prospective, at least in, in consideration to what we might actually spend out of the police department this year. Right?
I budgeted for, I don't know if you, you were talking about 2020, but I, I think I, I think, I believe I budgeted for 32. I, I don't think we'll, I'm not sure if we'll get there, but that was just out of precaution and being conservative. I believe I budgeted for them to be fully staffed.
And I do think that's what I'm looking at, in terms of the projected budget. I'm on page 10. Salary is projected at well, total 2.5 me out of the department. So I would assume that's fully, fully staffed. So I'm looking at two documents, I'm looking at the 2020 projected salaries and 2021 proposal.
I have, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's them being fully staffed. Did you hear me?
Yeah, I, I heard you, and
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm trying to, I'm trying to save money on this, on these discussions, but
Yeah.
Let me ask a big question. What are we doing as far as recruitment in that department? And, and, and again, this is, this is not substantive, it's not really directed, the, this is not being, I'm choosing my words carefully here. I'm not trying to dissect what we're doing, just to say, are we, do we have a recruiting process in place? Because my question is still financial, what is the likelihood that we actually reach capacity? Is it, are we more likely than not? Because my, my mind tells me we, we won't reach capacity, but what are, what's the likelihood that we reach capacity? Or is it more likely that we won't reach capacity?
Now, Don, all those are good questions. The the, it's, it's extremely good question, because one of the problems that we're facing is the lack of interest in being police officers, even when you pay them well. The state police, and I think I probably said this before, but I, I mean, at the council, I know I've said it several times otherwise. One of the biggest surprises for me when I became mayor was how difficult it is for even the state police to recruit policemen. When I left the state senate, they couldn't turn them away fast enough. It was the job everybody wanted. They were all told that a state center could get you that job, even though it wasn't true. We got calls every week. It was the most frequent phone call I got from people in law enforcement who wanted to become a state trooper primarily. Today, in the meeting I had with the Colonel, shortly after I was elected, I was really shocked. I found out how difficult it has been to fill positions in Phillips County. There are four positions in Phillips County, only one of which is filled. I thought maybe that was unique to us, because sometimes it is. Unfortunately, it's not unique to us. It's, it's true in every county in Arkansas, and that's the Arkansas State Police, which offers unbelievable benefits, prestige, and a lot of other things. So this is a problem in Arkansas statewide, but this is a problem nationwide. So let me, having said that, what we did do, and the positions that we advertised was, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the website, but the Arkansas Municipal League, this Arkansas Police, I think it was Chief Police Association, the HR consultants that we discussed earlier, all advised us to use a different website that would reach more people in the law enforcement community. So we used that website with a lot of hope. And it, it did not yield the, the results we had hoped for. How, on the other hand, we have had a lot of interest from local cities in the, in the region, such as Clarksdale, for example. And that is, that is a promising sign, and that's a direct result of the city council approving that schedule. Does that answer your question? So I think, the short answer is, I don't know, because people have to want to be cops.
Yeah. I understand. And then let me tell you where, where my mind is going as I read this. I see 17 entry level positions at 26,000 each. And we're not spending that money. Perhaps as a tool of recruitment, why do we continue to say 17 that we're not going to get? If we say 13 or 14, and then take the 26 times three or four that we save, and I don't know if it's a money issue, but if it is, perhaps we can use that. Money, money is the ultimate recruiter. If we can bump up some of these, perhaps it helps in retention or recruitment of, of new officers. It, it's just a thought, but if, if we're, if our numbers are as low as they are, we have something that we can play with. Now, let me say this also. I'm, I'm really afraid of saying that at this point, because I think this, this will be the first full cycle of the, the revenue loss we'll experience. So we really have to be careful about what we do in terms of things that we spend, and they're gonna be permanent, because you know, we won't be able to change it. But at the same time, just looking down the road, at least looking down the road, we may never get to, we've been trying to get to 30, almost as long as I've been, I think when I, when we first consolidated, we may have been at 30. We've been trying to get back to 30 for over 10 years now, and it's just not happening. So perhaps we're not going to get there, and maybe we should, uh, kind of change our, our line of thinking. That's all.
It's, it's a good, it's a good suggestion. I think it's a very good suggestion. I, I don't know if that's gonna be enough to get them to apply, but it's worth, it's worth an effort, for sure. Keep doing the same old thing, right? So I mean, it's something worth looking at, for sure.
If we lower the number, could we not maybe add on the sign-on bonus or something? That would be a, an enticement for something to help recruitment.
Yep, that's, that's a great idea. Derek, we might want to try and look at that, maybe game out some options with higher salaries and a sign-on bonus, and there might be some other ideas. You need unmute, Derek.
Yeah, that, those are good ideas, and I think that it's a good idea, and I think the finished signing bonus we're, we're gonna be given, it would probably have to be after they pass academy. We wouldn't want to just, you know, give them a sign, and they don't become certain. You know, give them assignment. They don't become certified officers, but I think that's a great idea. But the only thing, I, I, I hate to handcuff the chief. I think Don's idea is great. I think as far as ideas great. I considered it, but. Considering the crime in our community, I just didn't want to, and that's something to consider. I mean. I just didn't want to handcuff the chief. I didn't want to have any reason to say, you know, I don't know what's more important, the, the, the officer's pay. I don't know which is more. Has more to do with crime prevention, crime law, law enforcement, would it be more officers? Officer, I don't know, you know, exactly what, but I just didn't want to handcuff the, the chief and limit him in any type of way. But that's something certainly worth considering. And that's one of the reasons I, I did budget for the thirty two, so. But that's something, you need more than one hit on that one. You need, you know, full counsel, chief, assistant chief.
And I think it's fair to say, you know, one of the things that, that I prioritized when I became mayor was to make sure that. Department heads who each individually expressed some frustration with me, that they weren't. Included enough or prioritized, or however you want to say it, in the, in the budget process. To make sure that they were, were heard because they know their departments better than, certainly better than I do. So sure, you know, if we could get thirty two uniformed police on the streets, that's what we need to do. On the other hand, as, as Don points out, you know, really well, we've been trying to do thirty for years and it hasn't worked. So, you know, what are some, some other ideas? I mean, I'm certainly open minded to it. I imagine Chief Smith is too. Because, I mean, it's, it's, there's no question that what a priority it is. In addition, our lease on our, our police units are, are up. And we are in the process of getting state contract estimates for, to replace those units. That's important for a lot of reasons. One of those reasons is the, the ability to patrol frequently in neighborhoods. And to be able to afford the, the gas line and the fuel costs and the maintenance costs and so forth. That's been a challenge since I've been mayor, because we're at the tail end of that fleet. So that's something we're looking at right now, too. And that would help with more frequent patrolling to have. You know, when that, and that, that, that is in the process, and that will be coming up on your agenda pretty soon, I would imagine.
Yeah, I was, I was speaking with Senator Turner today, and one, another thing we mentioned, we were talking about it earlier. Is that, that there is anticipate a decrease in population as well, so maybe as many officers. Maybe aren't needed. I think at the time, when a city first consolidated, the population was right around fifteen thousand people. You know, so. Maybe it is appropriate that. The number of officers that are authorized may be reduced. That's, I mean, that's something else to, to, to consider, while we were considering it. Decrease in population.
That, that's certainly true, but I, I, I'm not saying it's something, something we shouldn't look at. We should look at all of it. I'm not convinced, though, that our crime rate hadn't gone up. So I. I mean, I'm going to tell you. The bottom line on a day-to-day basis here. When it comes to law enforcement and Don, we're, we're going to have a bigger discussion, a longer discussion about this with the new committee that you formed, I hope. Is that we feel very outnumbered. Outnumbered and outgunned. And I think that's very real. So our streets are militarized. People talk about militarizing the police, and I think that's, that's. You know, I think that's a, a valid issue and something to discuss. But I think it's also something that needs to be just talked about in relationship to. The militarization of our streets. We have military, we have military style weapons out here. In the hands of people that don't, honestly don't know how to use them. And it's, you know, with tragic consequences and. So. I, I feel like the more, the more, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Other comments and questions for tonight's meeting? All good, all good questions and points.
I think that. One of the reasons, can y'all hear me? This is one that, and I think that one of the reasons this meeting was called was to discuss the pandemic pay. And. I think after we got the answers to the questions that we asked on Tuesday night. I would like to make a motion. To pay. Everyone who is on the city's payroll, seven fifty. Excluding fire and police, and to give them nine fifty.
Andre, I think I saw you on here. Do we have to go into session sometime?
I, I couldn't understand you, ma'am.
Do we have to like go into the city council meeting officially to pass a motion?
I, I, I hear you. Well, that's one of the things that, that, that I was saying to you all before, and I've said it over and over again. All these meetings are official city council meetings. I advised against having the council being able to, at any point. Amande the city council agenda and vote on things. But during Mayor Hollowell's administration, and well, before Mayor Hollowell, Mayor Willis administration, then the Mayor Hollowell's administration. And continued to do it. And so every time you meet, it is officially a city council meeting. And that's the thing I, I, I keep trying to emphasize to everyone, these are all city council meetings. And so if they so want to add something to the agenda and, and do so, they, they, they are, they are limited to do so. We had a history of that where in West Salem, at the time John Weaver was the mayor. There was a boycott ongoing, and many of the council meetings, including Betty Jo Dahl and Walter Morris Jr. Were, they came to meet with the city council, and the city council. They said they were just coming to meet, and they weren't going to discuss anything, but they took up business that day. And they called Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, they were upset because they felt like they were duped. Mr. Lee told them that it's, it's always a city council meeting, and once they do it, then that's, that's it. That's why you give the notice and call the press on all the meetings. So at this point, if they want, if they want to conduct business, I think they've notified the press, and I think the press is online. So the, the public hears everything that's going on, and they can report on it. So they're, they're free to do whatever business they want to do. It's not a good practice, but they're free to do whatever they want to do, because the city council voted to allow, allow itself to amend the agenda. At any, at any point in any meeting.
Excuse me, but this was part of the reason that we were having this meeting, so I don't know if it's an agenda or what. But this was one of the things that was supposed to be discussed tonight.
I was asking his quest, I was asking his question about the first part. The second part, in the meeting, you all said you all called it specifically to discuss this. Excuse me, specifically to discuss pandemic plan, you all asked me to get an opinion from. The mayor, you were absent. I talked to John Wilkinson during the meeting. I got off the Zoom, talked to John Wilkinson, and he gave. His opinion about the, the CARES Act. Funds that we received, and I reported that to the city council, and they told me to get something to write in. And after that meeting, Helen sent me an email, but you had already got a written opinion, so I forwarded that to the city council. And they all have, they all have that. And so I didn't solicit another written opinion from him. But in that meeting, two days ago, they said they were having a meeting today, that they say to discuss this issue. And so that's, that's where we are today. I hope that that answers all of yours' questions. If not, then ask another.
But Ms. Crockett's motion is legal.
Correct, a motion, a motion is legal, because this is still a, a city council meeting.
Okay, so Ms., Ms. Crockett makes a motion that we increase the pandemic payment. To seven hundred and fifty dollars payable to all employees except for fire and police who will receive nine hundred and fifty dollars. Did I state that correctly, Ms. Crockett?
No, you did not. It's to give everybody that's on the city's payroll. Seven fifty with the exclusion of fire and police, and they will get nine fifty.
Does that include part-time?
Everybody that's on the city's payroll.
So, so it would include part-time. Well, I mean, let me just, before we go forward, is there a second to the motion? Is there a second?
Yes, it is. Second.
Mr. Franklin, second's the motion. Okay. So any questions or, or? Discussion? Okay, so my question would be, so this would cover part-time, would it also include elected officials? And also, does it change the date, the effective date? Would be the other question.
It includes everybody that's on city payroll. And it would be effective tonight.
Well, I guess what I mean is the start date of the date that you have to have been on the payroll, which is. Currently.
No, I'm not trying to change that.
It would include all part-time and all electeds.
Kim, Mr. Ramsey, can you please read back what I stated, because evidently the mayor is not understanding.
It says, motion to pay everyone that is on the city payroll. Seven hundred and fifty dollars with the exclusion of fire and police. Who will receive nine hundred and fifty dollars, and it does include part-time.
Ms. Turner, did you do, I know you did several revenue impacts. Did you do a revenue impact on this one?
Not on this particular, not on these particular, well, let me, let me double check, because I know, I was looking at one, but I think I did one that. Had everyone at a thousand dollars, and so that would be. More than. What they are asking for, and that would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And so it would be, it would be less than that. I did send the information. Tuesday, and so I didn't, I didn't designate the seven fifty and the one thousand. I let them know. What it would be for a thousand dollars across the board and seven fifty across the board, and so it would fall in there. They knew what the high, the, the high number would be.
And, and just to clarify them, there's nothing else we'll vote on. The, the email I sent to Mr. Wilkinson was really because he was the. Person identified to disperse the grant funding, not as a legal counsel for the. Although he serves both purposes in this case, so it's, it's a fair, I'd say it's a fair conclusion. That it's his legal opinion as well, but the primary reason I emailed him was to document. That as the dispersment official for the municipal league, and, and I mean, some of the, somebody may not know, but I worked for municipal league for. Approximately fifteen years as a contract employee until I announced for mayor and then I. Voluntarily withdrew from the league pending the election, and then I was elected, and then I. Officially withdrew from any further conversation, compensation or contractual relationship with the league. But, so I know a little bit, and I handle grant funding programs for the league, so I know a little bit about it. It's very unusual for the municipal league to disperse federal funds like this. Mr. Wilkinson was directed by Mark Hayes to be the official responsible for it, the dispersment officer for the municipal league. It's also unusual for the municipal league to be designated by the state to disperse federal funds. I'm glad they were. And I think John did an excellent job. But that's, that was the, the most important reason I emailed him. Was to, to get in writing, because the federal government, when they, when they get in a hurry to disperse money. Like this, in this case, inevitably, they come back in future months when there's some scandal somewhere. And only the federal government can do this, but they have the ability to change the rules of the game after the game is over. And come back, and I wanted to make sure we have it in writing from the program officer for dispersment of these funds. The agency in this case was the municipal league. So that we're, we're well covered. Anyway, any other comments or questions about the motion? All right, so I won't restate it because I didn't state it correctly the first time. So Ms. Ramsey, call the row.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis? Etherly?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia? Forward?
Yes.
That's four yeses and two absences.
And, and can I ask something? I, I just did a quick calculation. It'll be around, it'll be around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So in that neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may ask a question, just for my purposes, this unrelated, if I may ask a question. For the past two weeks, Mr. Turner and I have been trying to get some direction on the base pay. You have a base pay issue on December fifteenth. And we really need some direction as to what you are going to do on base pay and whether we're going to consider the mayor's. The mayor wanted to do a Department of Public Works, and we really need some kind of direction on that, so that we can craft the ordinance and get it to you.
Yes. I agree with what you said, what you said if you're asking me. Any, any questions, Mr. Val or comments?
I got a set of minutes that said that that was something that we voted on in the previous meeting.
We, what, what we didn't do. What we didn't do is the mayor was asking direction, Mr. Jones was asking direction, how we're going to structure the department. Because I need to do a ordinance, I did talk to you privately about how do we, how do we want to structure the department? Are you putting all three under one umbrella? How are we going to designate, whether we're going to have a director and then three co-directors, what are going to be the salary position? And the mayor, last time he tabled him, withdrew the advertisement, excuse me.
I just ran up the stairs, kind of went it.
But he, uh, he, uh, wanted direction as to advertisement for the landfill position. And all of that has to be done within the base pay. It's the year, end of the year and we just start beginning the year clean. And so those were things I wanted direction on and with the turn I needed direction on.
Attorney Valley, we would have to probably do that and put that in base pay before we could advertise. Uh, is that correct?
That, that's correct. So it's, it's further slowing down the, further slowing down the process unless you came to some kind of agreement. And then you authorized the mayor to advertise. Last time he, I'm not speaking for the mayor, but last time he kept acting for direction. And then he withdrew the advertisement that we had because there was no consistency as to what we're going to do. If you're not going to do it, then that's fine too. But we need some kind of resolve to the issue as we're going forward so that we can get it, get it done or we have an understanding of council that it's not going to happen.
Well, hi, this is Chris Franklin. Ma- mayor, would you consider that position going down to forty-five thousand instead of fifty?
Uh, no, I'd go down to forty-eight.
Well, I mean, I, wait, come on now. I'm, I'm trying to work with you. Forty-five, forty-five. I'm, I'm, I'm trying. If you go forty-five.
Forty-eight's a counter offer.
I'm sorry, man. I would have to, uh, stand the ride on out. I'm, I'm trying.
Really? But, uh, it, I think that we will be the, the council will be the one to decide what the base pay comes in at.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett.
Ms. Valley, if, if I could, Mr. Valley, um, the, the real issue is where we can, it's in the base pay now. We can advertise it now except for one provision of the, um, one, one provision. And the reason it needed to be brought down was because the, um, position as it stands right now requires a class C license coming in. So in order to abide by code and law and existing, um, base pay, we'd have to amend that, amend that to say that the person has to be actively working to achieve their class C license. Otherwise, otherwise it wasn't, unless the council approves that, it wasn't going to be an accurate job description. So.
Right. Well, in, in, uh, if I may, mayor. Uh, one of the, one of the things that I, I did discuss, uh, the council with, uh, Mr. Turner and with Mr. Philip Field, the engineer, I don't think I ran it by the mayor. I think I discussed it with Ms. Ramsey. But, uh, because these licenses are hard to come by, we've been blessed at, in learning that uh, not only with the zones has it, but also Mr. Deedon as well as, uh, Ms. Scarlett there at the landfill. But the lessons, the, the licenses are hard commodity to come by. They're very limited. And, uh, the one thing that I had discussed with the, the people I mentioned was in base pay, if you're going to do the position, you could advertise, uh, because I did talk to Ms. Ford about this as well, uh, because in base pay, what we could do is say, hey, if you have no license, this is your starting salary. If you have, uh, class, uh, one A or this is your starting salary, class one B, this is your starting salary, class one, uh, C was the master's license, this is your starting salary. That is an option. If that's what the city council wanted to do. I didn't run that by the mayor, didn't run it by, 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 by Ms. Ford, because Ms. Ford specifically called me about trying to develop an ordinance about licenses and positions throughout the city, including, uh, the sanitation department, the street department, uh, the, the water department and the landfill. Because she wanted some ordinance in place to cover all of that. And so with that, I yield to anyone else, but I was trying to get some parameters because I think we need to get the base pay resolved before the year is over. Uh, I hope that you will get the budget resolved before the year is over as well. But with that, I yield to the mayor or anyone else who, uh, wants to.
May, may I say something? Ma- mayor, the reason why I'm saying that is because you got to think about it. Mrs., uh, Mr. Dean and Mrs. Scarlett has theirs. What are we giving them?
Well, I, I thought that Ms. Scarlett was just a provisional class C.
It is a, hers, her, hers is a provisional class C and she still had to sit for the master's class to get a permanent one.
If I might make a suggestion, Andre, I could counsel would, would, if you would, give your input, uh, you know, tonight and then we'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday night's meeting. Andre, if we can get a, if we can get the appropriate, um, well, actually be Friday tomorrow. We'd have to get the appropriate language together to get in their packet, right? But we can also answer, I guess, ask your questions tonight. And if we don't have the answers or we haven't documented the answers, we're getting documented by Tuesday night. In the meantime, for your packet, you know, if we're going to put it on the agenda for Tuesday night, then we need an amended base pay and, and budget. Is that, is that right, Mr. Valley? Or, or correct me if I'm, if it's wrong.
Yes, yes, we need, we need an amended base pay because we, I still have to do the public works ordinance. But the question I had is from, from the top and how, how we're going to do it. Because what I discussed with you all, possibly of a director of public works. And then there being three deputy directors. Currently you have the name foreman in your, in your base pay for the street sanitation. And then you don't have a position like this because you've had a landfill director, general manager all this time. And so I'm just seeking to see how you do and how do you, how does the council and the mayor want to look at the salaries as related to? Are we saying that the street and sanitation foremans are comparable to what this position is that the mayor is going to advertise? How, how are we, how are we saying that? So we can, so we can wrap our minds around the place that an ordinance is what I'm, what I'm trying to see.
Well, I'll say my, my intention and then let the council say theirs or ask questions, but mine would be that they would be assistant directors or deputy directors, um, the three. And, uh, under the director of public works. And that the assistant or deputy director of the landfill base pay be set at no lower than forty-eight thousand. And the reason for that is because it's a, it's a competitive position. There are a lot of responsibilities, not unlike the water department commission requires federal and state compliance issues that if not followed could lend, could end up costing us a lot more than four or five thousand dollars. And we're talking ten thousand dollar a day kind of fines here. So the position is, uh, has much more responsibility affiliated with it. Plus, as the day-to-day manager of the landfill, the person, uh, should have, uh, be working towards a class C license. So you've got licensing requirements as well. And because of all the above, and it's a big job. No question about it. It's a big job. And I'll say again, uh, it's gone unfilled. Some of that was for financial reasons. But it, it, I think, and I, and this was from input from the council. So I think that the council is correct, that it needs a day-to-day person. Mr. Jones has done a tremendous job, but, uh, it would be better to have a day-to-day direct, assistant director in this case uh, out there every day managing it. And for that reason, I think the salary should not be any lower than forty-eight. And I would say the same kind of thing about the water department for the same kind of reasons. And of course, the salary for the water department is a lot higher than forty-eight. Street and sanitation while extremely important, I don't mean to diminish that. Uh, I do think, and they are getting raises. I guess we could discuss what we think is an appropriate raise. But the difference there is that Mr. Jones, and really under all three positions, Mr. Jones is ultimately going to bear the responsibility for something that uh, either happens or doesn't happen that costs the city, um, a lot of money in fines and, and so forth, or lawsuits or many other things. Street sanitation don't require the level of certification or responsibility, although they're very important positions and I don't mean to imply they aren't. Um, and I, and I would open up the Congress, I mean, I'm open to discussing the salary levels for those two positions, but I don't believe parity.
Mayor, I think they're comparable.
That, I, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure that, but that, that the three positions share salary parity because the landfill position requires so much more responsibility and so much more regulation and oversight by the federal side government. And Turner.
I think they're comparable. I think we, uh, should look at them like we did before when we equalized, uh, department heads or whatever. Those people have experience. They don't, they have to have a CDL or whatever. They operate heavy equipment. Uh, there, they guidelines that they have to, uh, go by, uh, especially with sanitation and everything. So I think they're comparable. And then on the other hand, um, bringing someone in, uh, with licenses uh, for the landfill should, uh, reflect a higher salary. And then as you, as you graduate or, uh, uh, up to, uh, C license, then you get the top salary. Now that's my, that's my opinion on that.
Derek, if you have mommy asking, what is the, or Andre, what is the base, what is not the base pay? What is the actual salary right now for sanitation and straight? Foreman?
Current amount?
Current, not base pay, but current.
Uh, around thirty-three.
What did we say?
Well, thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Yeah.
So we would be given the sanitation and street departments, um, positions, um, raises. Pretty significant raises, but we would be taking a drop in the landfill. Which I think, um,
What is the, if I can maybe ask a question? This is one that.
But Scarlett and, and the others out there at landfill do deserve a raise. Um, so that's something to consider. Okay, go ahead, Ms. uh, Ms. Crockett.
Okay, what is, what is the, uh, so we don't have a foreman out there at the landfill, right? At this present moment? What was, what was, I know that Bob was the, oh, but what was, I know it had to be like an assistant. What is the, what is the president pay for the foreman now?
You guys didn't have a foreman at the, uh, landfill. You, you took it out, actually you took it out of base pay. You say you didn't want to.
Okay, so why, how do we? So this, this position is not even in base pay.
The general manager is. The position that was advertised is in base pay.
So what you say a general manager?
Bob's old position is the position that they, that they advertise.
And how much is it being advertised at?
Uh, the base pay is fifty thousand.
But that, uh, I don't think that should be the, uh, because the person that's doing it is not going to actually be doing Bob's job. That's what Mr. Jones is getting paid for.
I mean, that's what the base pays.
But since it's not in there, we can change base pay, right?
Yeah.
Since the position is not there.
That position is there, but you can change the base pay for the position.
I thought it was taken out.
No.
Oh, you said Bob. You said Bob. Okay, 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 okay. I'm thinking two different things. Okay, okay. But are, are we actually advertising for Bob's position? Are we supposed to be advertising for a, what do you call him, foreman?
Uh, Bob's position was a position that was open. I guess America can elaborate more.
But that was before they became up with this, uh, parks, what is it? Uh, public works?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not the same, you know, it's not like a department head. Am I right or wrong? Can somebody help me?
Under the scenario, Mr. Jones would be the, 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 if you did a public works department included landfill and then Mr. Jones would be the department head, the others would not be, they'd be deputies. Uh, or foreman, however you, you, you do the phraseology, but there will be one department head.
Well, would you compare that, uh, that to, uh, department head that, uh?
I can, I can understand you, Ms. Ms. Ford. Would you repeat yourself, please?
With, with that, uh, would you compare the deputy director position to something like, uh, department head?
Uh, no, ma'am. Um, what's, 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 what? What you all had discussed, and I think the mayor's view, mayor would have to spound on this, is to have one department head and have three individuals who would be either foreman or deputy director or assistant director for each of those former departments. Because what, at this point, you would have the landfill, the street and the sanitation in one, uh, large department.
So the water department would be considered in it? Under the public?
Uh, no, ma'am. That, that one what the mayor was asking, but, but I, I defer to him.
No, I would say the water department per se is not, but the water leaks, uh, duties of the water department have been placed under Mr. Jones and would be, I guess, formalized under Mr. Jones, but not the water department itself. If that makes sense.
It, it doesn't make sense to me because if he's, if he's just over the leaks, who do the people report to? To him or to the, to the director over the, being the head, the foreman?
Well, we can make him over to the water department. That's what you want to do.
No, I'm not saying that's what we want to do. I'm, I got, I'm just asking a question.
Well, right now they answer to Bobby if they work on water leaks. So it would formalize that. Now, other, other cities, um, it's not uncommon to include the, uh, water apartment under it, but that's not what I had in, in, you know, planned anyway.
Well, my question came because you were saying that the, uh, director of the water department pay was more than fifty thousand dollars already. So I was, that's, that's why I was asking a question.
No, I was just making the, the, you know, comparison that that position has a lot of responsibility and certification requirements. So, you know, federal and state regulatory compliance issues. So there are a lot of responsibilities with that position. It's very similar to the landfill position. It's primarily my, my point. Mr. Valley, um, well, there's a lot of silence, so. Uh, we, would you like to get together tomorrow sometime and try to put something together for the pack Tuesday? And.
Yes, I, I'll be available by phone, but I won't be able to, to, to physically be there tomorrow. But I, I'll be available by phone and then, and conference, uh, yes, but I, I could give what you on it.
And we can put something in a basically kind of a working draft form and pick that up Tuesday night? Is that, is there any objection to that or does anybody want to? Add to that? It'd be fun. Anybody? Mr. Valley, were you trying to say something? Got to cut you off?
No, you, you didn't cut me off. I, I would just, I was just trying to think of how, what all the, 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 the city council would use. It's my understanding that you all just want these three departments together. There's no, no, nothing else that you try to put in public works.
That's the understanding that I have.
Mr. Turner, I have one question for you. Uh, have you been keeping up with things that, that could, could you also inform us as to what other positions of base pay that we need to, what other changes of base pay that we need to do? Because, uh, uh, I don't recall if there's any outstanding, but if you have any information, could you please inform us as to any, any outstanding base pay changes?
Yeah, I can, I can look over it. I, I think it may be one or two. I, I think what, what's happening is like the assistant landfill manager, it's in the base pay, but it's like has a zero beside it. So it's technically not in there. So things like that and, uh, changing the minimum wage from So things like that, and changing the minimum wage from ten to eleven, but I'll double check and make, make sure. That, there was also some changes. I don't know if you guys want to do it now or even consider it, but for budgetary reasons, I. Was kind of wanting to move some of the, and I guess since you're restructuring the. Make this public works department. It's kind of want to delineate between street and sanitation and move some of those. Employees from the street department into the sanitation department. So, uh, because. The, we can pay the street fund, the street workers' salaries out of the street fund. But the total that we have now is too many to, for that. For the street fund to cover all of them. And so I'd like to move some of the sanitation people into the, some of the street people into the sanitation department for accounting purposes. Uh, but I can, I can talk to you and the mayor and I, we can discuss with the council. After we come up with something. I had thought of that last year, but we didn't get around to doing it. But I don't want to complicate things anymore than what they are. So if it's something simple, you know, I, I discuss with you guys. If it's something that needs to wait till later, then. We can wait. But I will get you that, that, that information.
I, I don't want to complicate it either, but I think it's a complication that needs to take place. We're talking about consolidating three departments. I would like to see a flow chart. Who's in char, who's in charge of what? And who do you report to if you're in a certain position? Because. It sounds good financially to consolidate departments, but how does it actually work on the ground?
Yeah, I mean, that's good. That's a fair question, I think.
Yeah, that's, go ahead, man.
No, I just, I think it's a fair question. We can do that.
Yeah, because my, my issue is that I agree with Ethel on that. Is that's why I envision, when the mayor told me that, what my thoughts were, you have to have deputy directors or. Foreman, you have to have somebody beneath it, it all three. In all three former departments, someone beneath the, the director. Uh, for, that'll be a clear chain of command. I yield Mr. Turner, I think he was trying to speak.
No, I mean, I, I agree. And I was just going to say, maybe, it's a lot, actually, it's a lot. To, to get done in a short period of time, so maybe we can just do it in stages. Taking whatever's most important first and then kind of doing some of the other things later. I, I don't know if it can be done like that, but that may be a suggestion. Like I said, I, I don't think this is the total restructuring of that department can be done in. A couple of meetings. But like I said, I think it's something that, whatever's the top priority, maybe we can get that done first, do it in stages. And that's just a suggestion.
Right, because we'll need job descriptions and responsibilities.
Yes, I, I think we have job script for most of the jobs anyway, but that, that's something else we can look into. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Andre, did you get clarity on what you needed? I mean, at least as far as we.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I, I have a general outline as to what the city council is looking to see. At this point, there's no actual agreement that you, that we're going to do this. And so I guess we need to look at two separate base pays, so we can look at the structures, how you may potentially do this. Uh, because I think you need the base pay to clear up what you have now, if there's anything outstanding. And must, I will lean to Mr. Turner for that. But also, if we're going to restructure, we need to look at here the potential base pay for how we're going to do the, the department. Uh, but we, we, but we can, we can look at, we can look at it both ways. I'm, I'm thinking out loud, could you just ask me this question, man? I'm processing my thoughts and I apologize, uh, because I'm, I'm thinking on the, on the spot, but. Go ahead, man.
Well, I was just going to say, it would be fair to go ahead and put this on the agenda for Tuesday. Uh, and start the process tomorrow and try to get that to the council, or with the council objective. Trying to get that to you by the end of today, end of the day Monday, to give Mr. Valley a little bit more time.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that change the effective date of the pay raise that Mr. Jones received in the previous meeting?
No, ma'am, you've already voted for that. You voted for that, not as him being public rect director, public works director. You voted because. When I say you, I mean the body. The body voted to give him raise because of the responsibilities he's been doing. At the landfill. And if I may, I've been intending to say, I've been intending to say this, and I owe. I, I owe Mr. Mr. Jones a slight apology, and I talked to him about it privately, I tell the public I may become a publicist. Let, when we talked about the public works, Mr. Jones made statements that the landfill was, was out of compliance and et cetera. And I said that the landfill has been in complete compliance and, and that, that I didn't believe that portion. Uh, because we've had all these reports. However, and speaking with the fields, he said that I was correct, but Mr. Jones was correct in two thousand twenty. When Mr. Gasson got ready to leave, the landfill was in bad shape. And that the landfill was not being taken care of until. Until right after Mr. Gasson left. It's just that what happened for us, our benefit was. Covid hit, and there wasn't an in-person inspection when the landfill was out of compliance. And since then, the landfill has worked to be back in compliance and back in pretty good shape. It's not as good as Mr. Fields wants it to be. But I, I addressed those issues with Mr. Philip Fields, and he said that Mr. Jones is absolutely correct. While it was good in two thousand twenty, beginning this year, uh, he was correct that, that, that many of the people. The, the landfill wasn't being taken care of properly. So when you all voted, going back to your question, when you all voted. You voted for additional responsibilities that Mr. Jones was doing. And he, he was out there doing it, did help to, to, to get it back in compliance. So I told him that privately, and because I made the comments publicly, I want to say it will come as publicly in a city council meeting. And so I, I, I don't, I like to walk through the front door. I don't, I don't go in and try to, I wouldn't try to cast a spurge on Mr. Jones on that in that meeting, but. Because it may have been perceived as such, I want to make sure that, that I report to you the whole story that I talked about to Fields. But going back to your question, when you voted, we voted for. The city council voted to give him a raise based on this responsibility, not based on him being a public works director.
And it's probably my confusion or whatever, because in that same sentence or the very next sentence. It says public works director. So that, that may be some confusion on my part. That's what I read in the minutes.
Right, but the minutes haven't been formally approved yet. You all had that meeting, and you had had a meeting to approve that, prove those minutes yet.
Well, hopefully someone will look at that, uh, before they are presenting for, before, before they are presented for approval.
Ms. Ford, if you don't mind, say that one more time. Perhaps what is like that again?
The minutes that contains that statement, and maybe they will be changed. Before they are presented for the council to approve them.
I, I got you. Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Valley. Anything else?
Uh, no, no, sir, no, nothing else.
Anything else tonight on the, the budget? Mr. Turner, anything?
No, uh, just ask the council to continue to. Look through it and considering it changes or items that they may want to add or something they may want to take out, so. Before, I'm here to, like I said, you, we got your budget proposed, we got your proposed budget presented by. December first, so now I'm working with the city council. To make any changes that they deem unnecessary, or to get the budget in, in, in the place where they want to pass it, so. Any ideas, anything, any figures, any numbers that they need me to calculate for them or. Remove or add to anything, just let me know. You, like I said, you can call me, text me, come by my office or whatever.
Right. Now, one thing I want to say, when I meet with the mayor tomorrow. Council, you've heard the mayor's thoughts on the parity between the departments. And so you all have given no, no direction, more, more than likely, the base payment will be presented will be based on what. The mayor perceives as to relates to the three positions, uh, because I have no finances from you, so. As it relates to that, you all are free to discuss it at the council meeting. But I'm just telling you upfront, the numbers that we present will be based on what, what the mayor's request that's related to. The, the, the name descriptions and, and when I said name, because I mean the titles, whether it's assistant directors or deputy directors. And how, how we go forward, because we want to get a document to you. And you all can feel free to, to look at it, however you want to look at it on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Anything else you need to know, Mr. Valley, before we get off of this meeting? Or, or, well, Derek's already.
Well, I, I, I think the thing is, I, I, I think that we're, we're going to need the input of Mr. Jones, Mr. Uh. Mr. Turner, as well as Mr. Womack, you and. Mr. Strata, I believe it is, so that, so that we can understand exactly. How, 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 how we're, how we're going to do it, uh, but we can go from there. Those are just my thoughts, uh, but how, how, as I said, how you as mayor and, and, and city treasurer. You all do the finances, this, this, how you do them. I just want to look at the legal structure.
All right. Any other comments or questions to come before the budget workshop?
Uh, I have this one. So. Mr. Valley, so the mayor gets it. These salaries, he gets to say what these salaries should be, right?
Well, what, what I said, when we, I'm meeting with him, y'all are giving me no numbers of salary. And so the only thing I'm going to have is numbers from the mayor and will present those to you. And then you all will discuss those as, as relates to what should be the base pay on Tuesday. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Anything else to come for the budget committee tonight, our budget workshop? All right, if not, I guess, do we need a motion to adjourn the budget workshop? Anybody want to make one?
So moved. Have a good night. Second.
Good evening, everyone.